Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Mr. Kerr.
Nice to see you today. Given the length of my report last month, I don't have very much today, but there were a couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention and one action item for you to consider. First of all, our collections for the end of the fiscal year are now in. We received our last numbers a week or so ago, and in September, which is the last month of fiscal year, we collected $90,214.19, and that's the highest September yet. It's $8,344 more than last year. And this brings our total collections for the fiscal year to $1,200,050 -- I'm sorry, let me start that over again. 1.2 million, 50,695.82. This is a total increase of $48,401, and it's from last year, then that's a 4 percent increase over the previous year. We've talked a lot about where we were in that chase. As I've told you, from time to time, we generally average out to about 7 percent. We were down a little bit, but not down in collections. We were just down in increases. So, we're still operating about 4 percent more than what we did last year, and compared to the numbers that Visit Florida has recently released statewide, they were up 3 percent. So, we did better comparatively than the state overall. So, those are our numbers for last fiscal year. I'm happy to report, we're in discussions with Visit Florida. We've had that discussion going on now for several months. I'm meeting with their staff here shortly, and we'll be renewing our partnership very And then, the only other thing is, every two years, we have to do a biannual tourist development plan, and we're at that point, this is the year we do it. I provide you with a draft of the plan that we will -- my board will be considering in January. And, excuse me, when it comes to you, we'll need to have a -- it needs to be adopted in the form of an ordinance. Mr. Schuler and I have been talking about that, and I guess I'd need to ask you to ask him to prepare the ordinance for next meeting, if that works for you. And that's all I have.
Do we -- we need to do this by vote? To do that, and I will make a motion to ask Mr. Schuler to get with Mr. Kerr and come back with something for the board.
Does that also include authorizing a public hearing, Commissioner Sanders?
Sir?
Does that also include me authorizing me to schedule a public hearing on the proposal?
Yes, sir. Do whatever it has to do to accommodate it.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Merry Christmas.
And do you all have a Merry Christmas on behalf of my board. Good hunting, you all. For those of you that will be in the woods, and we look forward to seeing you in the new year.
I know who you point that thing to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda would be Ms. Amy Hamm-Kelly, planning and zoning report.
Hello, Ms. Amy.
Good morning. How are you guys?
Good to see you in Carabelle.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. I guess the pictures are going to catch up. Okay. This morning, we have a recommendation for approval. It was unanimous. It was a consideration of a request to construct a single-family residential dock located at Lot 10, Block 81, Unit 5, also known as 319 Sawyer Street, St. George Island, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed dock will be 19 feet by 8 feet with a 10 by 12 terminus and two covered 26 by 4 boat lifts. I think the 4 is a mistake. I'll check that out. Customer has DEP and core permits requested submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates Agent for Harold Bennett, and there is a proposed house on the lot.
Have -- Mr. Chairman? Have they submitted the proposed plans for the house?
They have not submitted the house plans. They do have room on the property for their house, 1,000 square feet.
And you do have a system where you monitor this, that when they get their dock approval and they say they're out of a proposed house, that they do go and follow through with a proposed house?
We don't have a system in place. It is in our computer. Once we issue the permit for the dock, then it's in our system as far as the dock being built. There is not -- there's no timeframe in the ordinance that states that they have to have a house constructed within a certain amount of time.
Okay.
But at this time, they do have room for a dock. I mean, a house.
I just want to make sure.
In the picture we have, Amy, there's already a dock there. Are they reconstructing the dock?
What they're doing is they're replacing the existing dock to a new configuration.
Okay. Because that's not -- I mean, I'm not trying to be technical, but that's not what it's saying. It's not saying that they're replacing the dock. They're asking to construct the dock.
Yeah, they're going to construct a whole new dock. They're taking that one completely out, and they're replacing it with a new -- a fully new dock.
Is it going to go out farther than the dock does now?
No. It is going out a little bit more than the proposed dock, but it does not exceed the 25 percent of the canal width.
Okay, because that is a canal.
It is a very -- my only comment was, it's a very short dock at 19 feet. We don't see many docks come through that are 19 feet.
Yes, in a little bitty canal.
Three or 400 feet, you know. But it's in a canal as previously been stated.
If you look down at the other half, the other dock's kind of going out like that. It looks kind of funny down there.
It's going sideways.
Yeah, it's going sideways.
A pleasure of the board on this issue?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion?
Before we go, it's two covered boat lifts. It's 26 by 14, not 26 by 4. I'll make that note so that --
So, it's 14 wide?
It's 14 feet wide, not 4 feet.
We do have a motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, the second item we have is a recommendation for approval. It's unanimous. It's a consideration of a request to construct a single-family residential dock located at Lot 11, Block 81, Unit 5, also known as 315 East Sawyer Street, St. George Island, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed dock will be 11 feet by 8 feet with a 12-foot by 31-foot terminus and one covered 31 by 14 boat lift. Customer has their DEP and core permits requested submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates, Inc., Agent for Harold Bennett applicant, and they do have a proposed house on the property.
This is on the same canal?
It's the neighboring property, yes, sir.
Yeah.
It's right beside it?
Yes, sir.
And they already have a high house on site?
No, sir. They have a proposed house.
Okay.
And they meet all the setbacks. I will have to talk to them about a setback on the road right-of-way, the Porter Street. They have a proposed 10-foot setback. So, I will have to tell them that they do have a 25-foot setback on the corner lot.
The motion needs to show that if we pass it, contingent upon straightening out there.
Yeah, that's important.
Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve with your comments being brought in, Mr. Kerr. It'd be straightened out with a setback.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Massey. It stipulates that it's straightening out the setback on this, contingent upon.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries also.
Okay. That's all I have for planning and zoning. I do have a public hearing, but I believe Ms. Marsha has a report before I go into that.
Before we do that, let me -- I'm going to report. If you'd like to switch.
Okay.
Take the mouse here. Commissioner, item 14 on my report. Go ahead to the county's website so I can -- inform the board that the building permit public portal is now active on the county's website. This portal will allow contractors, homeowners, and the general public to view information on all Franklin County building permits and associated inspections. Staff will hold a public workshop sometime in January, between January and March, for contractors and the general public to explain the best use of the portal. Since we have a few minutes before the public -- before the -- we have the public hearing, I want to show you guys how it actually works. So, basically, actually, if you could go back a bit for me, Amy, back to the county's website. You go to the main page on our website, and you see under the quick links -- scroll down for me, please. Right there, you see, there's a link right there that says building permits. And this is for the public now. So, you click, go there, and then you make -- you agree to the legal rules. So, that is basically a trimmed-down version of what the ladies in the office work with. So, over in the permit number, a lookup box, Amy, so you're going to look for a specific permit. So, I'm going to pull one from Carabelle. So, enter 26311 for me, Amy, please, and then click search over to the far right. So, there's that permit. So, to the very end, again, on the search, there's a thing, you can view more data about the permit. So, you go ahead and click, and that's where Amy can explain to you what most of the stuff means and the information. Now, if you want to see what inspections has been done against that permit, you can click the inspection report, and then that opens up all the inspections that's been done. And you can click on the first one to see which was -- that was a CO. Wasn't that, Amy? Correct?
I was looking at the search up in your file.
Yep. So, the final CO, it tells you that the building official did the inspection and all the information that's there for the permit.
And he signed off on it.
And this commission is for the public. You can do this on the --
And you can go and find out when he arrived at the job. They're talking about done checking --
As in?
The permits, like with our building, the guy that's doing our city permitting, Mr. Bo Crellin, you can tell when the guy that he sends over here, the days he goes out and inspects.
Oh, no. That will require some more work. Actually, that's the next thing we're working on. Right now, they're working on the inspector, Mr. Gary's portal, where he's going to take an iPad, and every day, instead of having to gather up a bunch of papers, he's going to run a report on this iPad. It'll tell him all the inspections he needs for that day, and it'll tell him where to go, what inspections needed. When he goes there, he does the inspection on the iPad. It automatically transfers into the system. So, there's no more writing off paper, bringing it into the office, and then have it entered by one of the ladies at the front desk.
That'd be good.
And in addition to that, when he does an electrical upgrade or inspection, he can email Duke directly from his iPad and tell him, okay, the green sticker's there, that inspection has been done. So, it's basically, I'm trying my best to automate the system as much as possible and make it more efficient. And I just want to show you guys what, basically, you're spending your money on.
Well, I was just wondering at work, because I'm checking, we have a little -- still have a little problem right now.
Okay.
With the building inspector getting here. The other day, I was here, he come quarter till 5 to get the paperwork, and the office is done, closed, and you don't have 35, 40 minutes to go do an inspection. No way he got to it.
Yeah, your question would be, well, yeah, probably more than likely, every place our billing official goes, it'll be timestamp as to when he did the inspection.
Right.
Yes, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, to answer your question, yes, that will be.
That's a benefit right there, because instead of calling the planning and zoning, they can just go on the Internet and find out our website.
Yes, and it's real time. So, when Mr. Gary does an inspection, it updates the public portal like immediately, right away.
It's all cloud-based.
Yes, it's all cloud-based. It makes it real time.
That's a good idea.
And we do have our -- with the system, we have, like, I forget how many terabytes of backup locally that we have, and so the system backs up to that. I can't remember the frequency, three days a week. There's a frequency it backs up to our own storage. So, I just want the board to be aware of what we're doing and what's next. This is the public portal. Again, Mr. Gary's is next. After that, will be the tracking system, sir, that you asked for. And at some point, probably next year, I'm going to encourage Virginia at the road department to switch from that desktop system she has, because she has the same system we had. It's outdated, and she spends a lot of money on maintaining it to switch to this system also.
That would be good.
Yeah, we also have the armory. That calendar will also be posted, and if you want to fill out the application to see what's when it's used, that's going to also be another tab that you can click to find out about. The public can click to find out about the armory rental.
So, if they wanted to rent an armory, they can see what days it's already occupied and then pick out the date that they want.
Yes, and then they'll know based on what they want, the price, and everything else. That'll also be on there. So, that's where we are. Again, I just want to let the board know, you know, what we're doing with this software.
Thank you for doing that, Michael, because that's a good tool to have.
So, we're entering the 21st century, and he's bringing us out of the 19th.
I'm telling you.
Kick him to fight him.
Pretty much, pretty much.
Kick him to fight him.
Pretty much.
Hey, I would call it earning -- I would call it earning his keep.
Earning his keep.
Yeah, he's earning his keep.
Any other questions for Ms. Amy, from the board?
I would just like to ask one question, Amy. I've talked to you about this before. I noticed a lot, a lot of lots being for sale, like east of Gray Eagle over there on the water side. And sometimes, when the people have applied to get building permits, the south side of the road land has been added into the north side to make it be enough land to be able to build a house. Now, I'm seeing for sale signs on those lots.
I've looked at a few of those. I had went to Alligator Point, and I came back and noted a few of those. And a lot of times, they put the signs on that side of the road, but it catches your eye. But also, there are signs on the other side of the road.
Okay.
So, I have noted, you know, when I looked, I even pulled around and stopped and came back. But a lot of times, that there are on both sides of the road.
Because you know it's determined that those lots right in there are unbuildable.
Right. So, they're trying to catch your eye that you have access to water.
It was worrying me, because there are more and more of them coming up. So, anyway.
And there may be a few out there that, you know.
Try to.
You know, but I -- it's hard to enforce those things.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you very much.
I'm glad you asked that, Commissioner. I had the same question, because I've noticed several between Carabelle and East Point. Same way, I'm looking, I'm, there's no way they could build right there. They put the sign up there for me.
They can walk across it to the waters, but it's not buildable.
Just enough room to park a car.
And there are a few. I've had a gentleman came in. He was from New Jersey two weeks ago, and we sat down for about an hour, me and him and his wife. And in St. George, St. Georgia Sound, there are a lot of platted lots in there that look like they're unbuildable, and a lot of them are because there's no property there. So, we did some measurements and different things, and, you know, they were able to put something there, but it was going to be tight.
There's also this whole city of St. George, very back in 1940.
Yeah.
That's all in the Yellow Hill area. And those are all platted lots that are there, and we have, there were lots of record, you know, 50 years ago, so we have to honor those. But what happens, we superpose a 1 acre requirement in there, so they're platted, they got to combine lots and all kinds of stuff.
Well, but around Royal Bluff and, well, around Royal Bluff and Yellow Hill, that's fine, because you've got enough land there.
Well, it's really fast.
But down the other part, you know, because that's part of the old plat that you're talking about. That's back when Russell Singh had his house there, had all those docks out there for the last --
But most of it's a real, they're putting their side of the hill.
I have a question. You talking about, Commissioner Sanders, you talking about when you're going back toward East Point, like toward John Allen Road, that where the area you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about back before you get --
Oh, okay.
Back before you get to Dead Man's Curve, all up in there, Yellow Hill and all that.
And coming back this way.
Coming back this way. Coming back this way. And then I saw the for sale signs, your way down. Your way and Williams Way.
Any other comments from Ms. Ham?
Thank you, Amy. We're looking into that.
I call it a Merry Christmas. Ms. Amy, Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
She'll always be Ms. Ham.
Michael, could we go ahead? You got something you need to do?
No, I was just talking about reports that you wanted to do.
Well, either you or Michael won. It doesn't matter to me. Is your report short, Alan?
Well, I got one letter I got written.
Neither one of y'all's reports are short. Come forward, Alan. We'll start something here.
Okay. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My report is, really, the most, only thing that's controversial is the first item, or maybe controversial. Anyway, as you know, the board has discussed several times for the last meeting, writing a letter about the management of the bay, and so I drafted a letter, this is item number one on my report. Board direction on the letters regarding the future bay management. After extension, after extensive discussion with Mr. Morone, I have created two letters based upon board discussion at the December 5 meeting. One letter to Senator Monford, and I apologize for misspelling his name there, and Representative Bashir's, and another letter to Adam Putnam and Governor Scott. The two letters contain the same text, but I thought it was appropriate to send one letter to our legislative delegation and one other letter to our administrative side of the state government, because both legislative and administrative branches of the state government have influence over how the bay is managed. And so, I was just going to read you one of the letters, because they're both have the same text. They're just addressed separately. It's been my experience over the years that if you, we could have sent one letter to Senator Monford, then just copied Mr. Putnam, but if all you do is get a copy of the letter, you tend not to respond to it. So, my idea is to send original to both. All right, so both Senator Monford and Adam Putnam would get the letters, and they are the same, except for a little bit of the ending. So, I'll read the first one to Mr. Putnam. The Franklin County, the Franklin, I have a typo there. Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is very concerned about the future management of the Apalachicola Bay oyster industry. It appears to the board that the state, who has been actively managing the bay for at least the last 30 years, is now trying to extricate itself from bay management just when the bay needs it the most. It is no secret that the oyster harvesting has plummeted in the last few years. At a recent public meeting, University of Florida researchers announced oyster production on natural bars had dropped to five bushels per acre. For sustained commercial harvesting, the productivity of the bay should be 300 bushels per acre. Active intensive management is needed now if the bay is ever returned to sustainable productivity. And yet, now, through legislation to be introduced this session and through decisions made by FDACs and other state agencies, the state is proposing to shed itself of the responsibilities of licensing oyster harvesting and is not planning on any more shelling programs to replenish the natural bays, natural bars. Now, when the bay has collapsed, the state of Florida is walking away from managing the bay and the oyster industry. The Apalachicola Bay oyster has been the benchmark of all other oysters are judged against. It is the premier oyster from the Gulf of Mexico. State oversight and management needs to be maintained. Current proposed legislation has the city of Apalachicola becoming the licensing entity for oyster harvesters. If the city were to issue licenses, the license would become nothing more than a piece of paper, as the city does not have the resources to take over management of the bay. If the city were to issue licenses, then who would permit reshelling efforts in the bay, as the city does not have jurisdiction in the bay? The state of Florida needs to continue to issue licenses, collect funds, and invest those funds in the oyster industry. If the state does not want to be responsible for keeping a trust fund for the purpose of future reshelling, then the state should, could reduce the licensing fee or keep the fee as it is and remit those funds above administrative costs to the county for future county reshelling programs. If FDAC is determined to remove itself from management of the bay, then please have FDAC staff work with the county on other options besides the current proposed legislation of transferring licensing responsibilities to the city of Apalachicola. And so, that's, to me, it's a fairly strong letter. It's kind of blunt, maybe it's too more blunt than you all want to send, but I know there's some emails, and we discussed last time, oh, the state of Florida is telling other people in the community that there's going to be reshelling programs. But they're not any reshelling program the state's running. The state of Florida is implying that the county is going to be responsible for shelling programs, but they have not entered any agreement with us to do this. We're being forced into this because the state is walking away from its responsibilities. And so, I was sort of blunt on the letter, and I defer to you all whether we should send it or what direction you all wanted to go in.
I'd like to inform the board that I talked to Mr. Nickelback, and suggested that he keep, if he's going to have to do the videos and everything else, then why not issue a piece of paper, which is a license for the oyster? So, and also retaining those funds for future use in Apalachicola Bay.
What was his response?
Basically, there wasn't one.
Okay.
But he asked me the question of what the board felt or how the board felt. I said, I can't speak for the board, but I can speak for myself.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what I think you need to do, is continue doing what you've been doing and not, as Alan's letter states, not throw us under the bus and forget about the oyster industry here in Apalachicola Bay.
Yeah, I think the same thing, Mr. Chairman.
So, I have delivered that message on.
Okay, and if no one, if none of the other board members have a problem with it, I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and have Alan send this.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, we'll send it out. Next, all the rest of the report is probably straightforward, so I might be able to get it done before the timeline. Inform the board that the Triumph meeting here in Apalachicola has been postponed until either January 29th or January 30th. As soon as I get the date, I'll inform the board. It has become customary for the chairman of the county commission and the county holding the meeting to welcome the Triumph board to the county, so I've told the chairman about that opportunity. Number three, inform the board that I attended the December 8 Triumph board meeting in Panama City. The Triumph board has hired Dr. Rick Harper as its economic advisor. They are still seeking administrative staff, so there's been no review of any pre-applications. It is doubtful of significant headway in reviewing the pre-applications will be made by January meeting, as there are some 122 pre-applications in the Triumph system already. At the end of the December 8 meeting, all the Triumph board members gave short statements regarding the criteria they think will be important in reviewing pre-applications. There was a great deal of agreement that a successful project would, and I have got those A through F, and I'll read them to you. So, this is what the board members agreed was important. And A, that a successful project would not involve repairing infrastructure that should already be maintained and not fund projects that are normally funded by other sources. So, they're looking very heavily to make sure that we're not trying to supplant local funds. It's a very --
Well, I'm glad of that.
Very big deal. B, provide matching funds to the Triumph partner, so the Triumph is a partner and not a cash cow, where you're seeking all your money out of Triumph. C, show the project has long-term sustainability. So, they're going to give us money, they want to make sure that whatever it is, especially economic development, that it can be maintained after the Triumph funds are used up. D, promote a better class of jobs than that is currently in the community. A successful project will have benchmarks for job creation, and if those benchmarks are not met, then Triumph will exercise its clawback ability through redemption of performance bonds or personal guarantees they're going to put on the people proposing these projects. So, it's going to be a significant issue if you want to get economic development money that you can pay it back if you fail. Show the project will benefit the future. And that's sort of open-ended, but you've got to have some hope that you're making a better community out of this. And F, broaden the community's economic base. Expanding the tourist base is not diversification in Triumph's board's minds. Not that they won't fund some stuff, infrastructure such that helps tourism, but they, if you're just trying to promote tourism, that's not an expansion. As Mr. Ben said in his statement, the Triumph board is not here to build more boat ramps. They are looking for something different in North Florida, and they are going to do their best to make that impact. The challenge that they have is that the Triumph board has $300 million out of $1.2 million granted to them by the legislature. If the Triumph board doesn't make progress and doesn't have successes that are beyond what the legislature expects, it's possible the legislature won't authorize any more money to Triumph. So, they're on a, it's a challenge. As you all know, the legislature meets earlier this year. I think it meets in January and February this year, but it may be February, March. And so, it's an early session, and the Triumph board is, I don't know what's going to happen in January, but they're on the gun to try and get projects, you know, approved, so they can prove to the legislature that they are doing great and different things in North Florida.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I can tell you, if you look back and refer back to the paper I gave y'all from the Gulf Consortium about the projected projects for the 23 counties, there is a lot, and in the eight counties too, there is a lot of boat ramps in there. And this is what former Speaker Benz is talking about.
Okay.
And I mean, he's saying, this is, and, well, see, and if you remember, what was Triumph, I mean, what was the, what was the restore money supposed to do? It was supposed to restore the bays and stuff, and it was to promote economic development, right, Mr. Chairman?
Diversification.
Diversification, and that's what we need to do, for sure.
As a lot of the local communities along the Gulf of Mexico is based on either seafood or tourism coming to the beaches and all, they want more diversification. So, if you had another oil spill or something, you didn't lose all your economics in these coastal communities. They want diversification that keeps these communities thriving, even though there's something happening in the Gulf of Mexico. So, that was one of the highlights of that.
So, we'll see. We'll know more as the Triumph board gets up and running with their staff, so we'll know more in January, I'm sure. And it's certainly possible that some of the projects submitted through Franklin County or, you know, entities in Franklin County are going to have to be revisited, because some of them, I believe, do represent a rebuilding of infrastructure that I think Triumph is going to say, no, you find another way of doing that. I mean, we're just going to, we're going to find out. Number four, inform the board that Ms. Kim Wills, Florida Great Northwest Executive Director, is putting together a pre-application to Triumph for some $15 million of Triumph funds to be available for property tax abatement for successful businesses wanting to relocate to the eight counties. I have spoken to Ms. Wills about the concept, and I have spoken to representatives from Willco and Gulf Counties regarding the concept. If Triumph awards Florida Great Northwest with funds, then each of the eight counties in Triumph will have an opportunity to decide if they want to participate. I consider the Florida Great Northwest proposal in the same light as Tallahassee Airport's foreign trade zone designation, which includes Franklin County, and the Gulf Counties Intermodal Rail Corridor project, which we had, which also includes Franklin County. If and when economic opportunity comes to the panhandle, Franklin County will have a range of incentives it might be able to offer. So, while initially, I told the chairman that Florida Great Northwest was listing every county as a partner, it's now backed off of that, and none, no way, no county will be a partner. They're asking Triumph to set up an umbrella, a superstructure, then if we like it and there's an opportunity for Franklin County to have some great industry, then the tax abatement program will be available to us if we want to participate. So, they're still fleshing out the details, so I just want to give you that information now.